All right, let's break down. God be thank you today, and we thank you for waking us up, getting us locked, and I pray that you can get with us in this current meeting. God be with you at death, um, to the people of the county. God be thank you for loving them. God be thank you for Jesus. And I pray that you may have...
Glad to be here. This is the life of the United States of America, and to the republic, for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, well, as I was about to say, I'll be speaking this morning. Uh, if you would like to speak, that's legal along. If you will bring your hand, and I will backside you, and if somebody's gonna stop you, then I'll sit you, and I'll get to you. Uh, if you have questions to speak about this morning that's not on this agenda, uh, toward the end of the agenda on item number twenty-two, it's in, uh, this type comment that concerns from the public or non-dependent items, at that time you can come forward, state your name and address, and, uh, we have three minutes to address your voice. If it's something that needs to vote, we may have to reschedule, and you can always put it on a later meeting agenda. Uh, the other thing I ask, if you have a cell phone, uh, if you don't mind, dial again at this time. Thank you. Number three, approval by the agenda. Are there any cases, allegations, allegations, anything to be addressed? If not, is there a way to approve?
Nothing to approve, please.
We have voted by Commissioner Page, second by Commissioner Lee, any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same time, voting in series. Fifth, a public series, number four. Is work to hold a public series because at this stage at nine thirty, or assume their efforts possible on the pathway of a proposed ordinance to ban the limits of golf cart operations at Keaton Beach? And this is probably a public series, but we will begin by, uh, Mr. Louden should read this by, hold it somewhere long.
Hello?
Okay, we will say, uh, question by Commissioner Riley, he said, uh, he wants to go to the center. If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same time, voting in series.
No one else in Taylor County or kind of been, 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 that, 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 or had a score, but that committee, that committee of Taylor County, that ordinance, it bans the limits of golf cart operations in Keaton Beach, around the progress of the state, two hundred yards north of the corner store, provides severability and provides respect to state.
This is a public series, I want to know if they're home or first. So if you wish to speak on this matter, please come forward, state your name and address, we have you there. Yes, sir.
Tommy Mollman. I like him pretty good.
Yes, and your address, sir?
And Ricky Michelle. Uh, I've been out here about twenty years, trying to change this, uh, but, uh, I'd like to be deemed to, uh, change this, such a fact like it was, and go to, uh, these subdivisions on the left-hand side, and go towards, uh, figure out, uh, to expand the golf carts to that area, because we have a lot of people to live in there, and to ride the golf carts, like, of course, also, uh, change it, I guess, the storm by the shore, moving back to where Little Greenfield was, and make it a lot safer for, for those traveling in the area, and the changes of seasons, uh, would be a great, how, how great, so, you can go through that point about, about, about location, which is going off, and it might be somebody's, uh, uh, my job, good work.
Yes, thank you. Anyone else? Someone else, please, 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 on this side. Okay, uh, yeah, I'll give them the board. Any questions, have a thought, yes?
I do. I'm fine with standing, uh, DC, for, figure out directions, and that way, and I think
...area. And, uh, that's the reason to move, uh, move it closer to the corner store with the congestion charge where it needs to be twenty-five miles an hour, where the, where the public recognizes that it's twenty-five miles an hour and not, uh, not fifteen hundred or further feet down the road where it changes to twenty-five miles an hour. And they've got a long stretch there, a long rural stretch, uh, to maintain at twenty-five miles an hour because, um, it'll take issue with the [inaudible].
My first amendment on my view, I have to agree that I think it's a safety issue and we are here in public service to ensure the safety of our citizens. And I am in no way in agreement with moving the golf cart sign where it is and increasing the speed. I just, I just, let me get you off. Uh, I just think that that, um, is a dangerous situation and I don't want to be responsible for that. So, I, I seem to agree with the system that they come forward and, um, and address this issue. Um, so if I had a place to do this, so, um, we should.
I would, I'm fine with leaving at twenty-five miles an hour because if that makes it safe, but I don't want to take time to [inaudible]. When you round that after a few weeks going slow down there, I mean, somebody can't drive a minute and a half, whoa, it takes about a minute and a half to get down there. They can't even get a minute and a half to get, and they're in a big hurry, that big hurry, and that's just, it's safety issue with people on it. I'm fine with twenty-five, but I just do not want to do, but I'm not on such a [inaudible]. And I believe it's as long as what it is. And people, when you round that after a few weeks, I mean, it's not that big a deal to the [inaudible]. So, I, 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 I doubt that big hurry, I think, uh, [inaudible].
Yes, I would be willing to pass.
Uh, it's about like, yeah, of course, yes, I've been following [inaudible] specifically this, uh, same thing, [inaudible]. But one individual now is getting through. And if one person drives a golf cart for that distance, other than that, it's over, that would always be the reason why, uh, then some kind of [inaudible] be going on and be [inaudible]. It's a safety hazard period. I've been in the business for thirty-four years, more than that, and long, [inaudible] for one individual change, the way up with one person driving a golf cart. Uh, I just disagree with that a hundred percent.
Yes, anyone else?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Actress. I feel, I think, seventy fifty Dale Beach Road, and I get this thing about, and this is not [inaudible], this is about safety. And, uh, it was not very [inaudible] when we were [inaudible] off our [inaudible]. Uh, we did move from [inaudible] to Dale Beach Road. But if you come out of there on a highway or anything, the feeling that people are going, it's serious. You don't even, they only get twenty-five miles an hour at the beach road through the corner. And it was forty seconds for [inaudible] to move the new sign from Dale Beach Road. You're gonna say forty seconds to [inaudible] about here today. I found it from the forty-five to thirty-five to twenty-five yesterday to the corner store that says twenty-five miles an hour, and it took me approximately a minute or thirty seconds. I did it three times for this [inaudible]. And then I found it from the ice place where I was told it was going to be moved back to my lane where the [inaudible] golf cart sign is exactly, and it was forty seconds. So, you're talking about saving forty seconds out of people's time. And if that's one forty, you need safety, that sign, that it's a safety issue. Hammer's are gone behind cars, boats are coming behind cars, and they are flying down the road. And I was coming around today, and how many people go ten miles an hour around [inaudible]? That's the ceiling, that's around [inaudible]. I don't know that I did that. I, but, you know, we see y'all consider that. And also, we have, we pay a lot of taxes to be there, to be happy. And we need to get a camera with a flashing light to take pictures of cars that are on the beach road, like right there going to the point, like in front of your house or somewhere down there, and take pictures of cars that are exceeding twenty-five miles an hour. It's dangerous. And y'all can make money on that. I guess the opportunity of getting tax for [inaudible]. Um, and also, I'll say to you, golf carts are seasonal down there from Memorial Day to [inaudible]. Have a crossfire at Dale Beach Road, or wherever y'all are moving, and see seasonal golf carts. And if people fly, um, get twenty-five miles an hour at the corner store, fly up there and stop.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes.
I didn't sign up ahead of time, but I think.
Yes, I'm [inaudible].
I mean, it's kind of hard, but I need to tip [inaudible]. And I travel this route, uh, probably forty-five plus. I mean, all kinds of traffic going that way, uh, four or five parts of the town, I've never been in a golf cart. So, it seems to me that it might be an issue of the man who's doing something for one or two people, maybe nobody, uh, I, I, I think it's, uh, out of proportion to reduce the violence for people, I would say.
Thank you, anyone else? Yes.
I'm not doing more, I'm, uh, in, but I live at, uh, two hundred year old [inaudible] Perry, but I've been [inaudible] house in, I'm [inaudible], by the way. And we have a house at, uh, [inaudible]. I guess the question is, if you're talking about a safety issue and other things, are these golf carts licensed to be on the road? Do they have a tag? Do we have license drivers? We can talk about exposure, uh, insurance, I mean, if somebody gets, somebody, or the golf cart gets somebody, uh, running around, we have that covered in, in [inaudible]. And we're looking at, because it's a vehicle on the road and it will not license it now. Maybe we're missing out on tax revenue for the public because they're using the road as like a regular vehicle. So, I think we consider that on the [inaudible]. Is that being done? What, what have we done here?
Well, I can't speak for the owners of the golf carts, what they've done, but what does [inaudible]?
That's, 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 that's.
And that's all, all been covered.
What about insurance?
Yes, all of that.
Turn signal.
Turn signal, everything, but their roof, their, their [inaudible].
Only there is [inaudible].
Well, I agree with the safety issue and what we're trying to do here, but we just need to be considering of the people and regular vehicles as well, and, and all, what we need to be on the road by [inaudible] golf cart, I'm not [inaudible].
Yeah, thank you. I would just speak one more time, one other time.
Uh, if you look at the part of safety value, if it's twenty-five miles an hour and you have the golf cart sign, you are covered to do that. But before Frank had it moved and he did, y'all are going with the golf cart sign, twenty-five miles an hour, and you are not covered without anybody being insured, so. So, he had it legal, he had it moved as illegal when he removed it and did the sign properly.
Thank you.
Up there. Yeah, before he got here, I prepared a conflict because of our [inaudible]. And I said, I wouldn't discuss, but it was this permission, I was like, [inaudible]. They all discussed, you know, let's, let's, let's go back a little bit here. Okay, all right. Uh, we have time, um, but I haven't signed it ahead, but this is any way, uh, in terms of, I have to say, uh, no, we don't have conflict, it's [inaudible]. I tried, uh, both, uh, confusing you, uh, 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 I, I was, I didn't vote to [inaudible]. Still not [inaudible]. I mean, when you talk about, uh, I talked about, uh, I, I think, [inaudible].
I, I, if I could, I, I.
No, I know, understand that. If you have a conflict, you, you clear a conflict, it goes without saying, that you don't talk about, because you [inaudible]. If you talk about, well, I'm sure if I talk about, I [inaudible].
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bishop. I, I just want to say that, uh, that the majority of the public here today have stated that, um, they are for this ordinance. And, um, I've been telling them this, I hear that it is a unsafe situation. You make a real case, um, that makes me know that it is very unsafe. So, uh, this is a fact, if you want to reach safe [inaudible], I'll, if there's no other say, I'll have to go and I'll second your argument.
Take the motion, if you accept the order, and, and today, the resolution, the order presented to them, to move the golf carts on under state [inaudible] uh, [inaudible]. And on the other end, just golf carts, uh, [inaudible].
Okay, so you become [inaudible]. All of that, [inaudible] by [inaudible] on second that road.
Got a motion by Commissioner Brad, second by Commissioner Stigel, and David Johnson receives the motion, looking to, uh, prove the order, uh, again. Does the board have any further discussion?
Yeah, so we have moved it in, we've moved it out.
Just moving [inaudible].
You made it, hold on, answer to go, [inaudible].
For, for reducing the distance, um, fifteen hundred feet, or safety reasons, caused such, uh, law area.
Right, he doesn't, that's enough over, you know?
Yes.
[inaudible]. That's just, thank you, just, just the [inaudible].
If you know this, please say please.
Okay, go ahead, I, I, all right, [inaudible].
And roll [inaudible].
Roll [inaudible].
Mr. Brad.
Uh.
Mr. Davis.
Yeah.
Mr. May.
I have a say.
Mr. May.
Okay.
Mr. Stigel, yes. That's, uh, great. Thank you.
Order's passed, three one. Right ahead.
And that moves to [inaudible] five, the board calls public hearings that reduce safe [inaudible] AM are assumed they are responsible on the passage of [inaudible] one three eight rules and regulations for [inaudible]. If the motion is read as ordered by [inaudible].
Motion to read that out, sir.
And [inaudible] [inaudible]. [inaudible].
Order that the [inaudible] county of Florida provides [inaudible] creating rules and regulations specifically to [inaudible] or by [inaudible] county of Florida, that for counties to violate provides severability and provides [inaudible].
The social [inaudible] hearing, if there are any [inaudible] that would like to come forward and speak about [inaudible].
Speaking, David, David [inaudible]. Uh, just wanted to say thank y'all, uh, so it's [inaudible] very grateful that we're going in our [inaudible] reserve market during our [inaudible]. And, uh, we're very excited about all [inaudible] [inaudible]. And also, we saw [inaudible] a hot time, eighty fifty, that has [inaudible] on it. You can say half of us dressed away, but it is, uh, you can say maybe that's the [inaudible] a little [inaudible]. Thank y'all.
Anyone else? If not, uh, what is the [inaudible]?
[inaudible].
And we have [inaudible]. Second by [inaudible]. And [inaudible]. And not [inaudible].
Order.
Roll [inaudible]. Brad, um, Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. May.
Aye.
Mr. Stigel.
Aye.
As [inaudible]. Public hearings that reduce safe [inaudible] AM are assumed they are responsible to determine whether they count or they take [inaudible] land located in [inaudible]. Uh, the resolution [inaudible] and [inaudible]. Motion by [inaudible]. You have [inaudible]. All [inaudible].
Aye.
All [inaudible].
Resolution. See if we draw [inaudible]. There, in Florida, and they have [inaudible] that's due to the closing street, due to [inaudible] uh, location, that, uh, [inaudible]. Specifically what this is, is the closure of a part of the land, [inaudible].
Public hearing, anyone [inaudible].
Hey, everyone, [inaudible] on [inaudible] [inaudible]. I'm going to ask [inaudible] to look into [inaudible] boat ramps, [inaudible]. From the time the boat ramps were built two years ago, there was [inaudible]. Uh, [inaudible]. Uh, [inaudible] [inaudible]. [inaudible] vehicles have tried to park there. They already [inaudible]. In the past, Main Street, which is [inaudible] looking to close it, from [inaudible] to Central, uh, certified [inaudible] vehicles, [inaudible] parked there. Obviously, [inaudible] side of property because there was no fans, and nobody was using that [inaudible] fish out, was basically [inaudible]. The land that is looking to close, that can be used for parking without [inaudible] private property, is [inaudible] like two hundred feet, that's like eight at top, I couldn't even take [inaudible] survey or anything like that. That will park [inaudible] amount of [inaudible]. Uh, in past seasons, all the roads in that [inaudible] position, either the [inaudible] had [inaudible] and vehicles parked in the right way. I'm sure the county [inaudible]. Uh, I urge you not to close that [inaudible] because of parking [inaudible]. I urge you, if you do not close it, to look at making that portion of Main Street, the right way, easier to park on. Uh, that's [inaudible].
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good morning. Been a while. Jeff Hunt, one twenty-one, Main Street. Uh, I'm speaking for my neighbors and myself. There are six homes on Main Street, um, which mine is one o. And we come to a stop sign to Highway fifty-one, and there is no Main Street straight [inaudible]. It's never been developed, there's no [inaudible] there. And it's a big wet spot there, it's a wet spot, [inaudible]. And obviously, that's why the county didn't keep the road up there because it was wet. Uh, companies that have come in that, uh, [inaudible] this, do something with this property, [inaudible] to do support, [inaudible] is part of [inaudible]. They own the property on both sides of Main Street, over there, [inaudible]. On my neighbor's side, see no ditch bench or there being there, other than, well, not this bench, but the reason being is because, and their plans, and what they're doing with fish out, and they own the property on each side of the wet spot, they're trying to [inaudible] the dry side or the dry part of the wet spot to make additional parking. And we think that that is massive. Um, so therefore, uh, we all have no objection, we believe, I think, we know the drawing of what they're planning to do, I think they're [inaudible]. Um, I, I think they're continuing to be [inaudible]. But I really don't see, if the county decides to put parking there, you're gonna have to dress the way that you and all the [inaudible] property there. I think that has caused [inaudible]. Um, I think the information that's [inaudible] familiar, if they look at it, I think, uh, hopefully, they will probably explain a little bit by the eye, but I want you to know how the neighbors feel about it, um, [inaudible]. Like I said, [inaudible]. Never been a road, [inaudible].
Yeah, okay, yeah. Um, obviously, the owner is not [inaudible]. Okay, then I'll [inaudible]. Thank you. Any, any other questions from the board?
Just, uh, [inaudible]. How long has this been, just for miles dedicated? Fish out is, uh, closed, and I'm still [inaudible].
Fifteen years.
We think not fifteen years. And the, uh, the, the other property, [inaudible] off of Main, where the [inaudible] was, that part of [inaudible].
That's part of the fish out property that too has been closed for fifteen years. From my understanding, all of that has been [inaudible].
So, is there no industry or any activity on that property?
Okay. Not legally.
Okay.
I mean, you know, somebody just pulled up their [inaudible] work, they didn't have permission to park there, is what I mean. Second through time.
Hold on, I think you had a [inaudible].
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, the property, [inaudible] first avenue, uh, grid. I do agree that there is parking [inaudible].
What is your [inaudible]?
Uh, the property that he's opposed to make into a parking lot, which [inaudible] is half-wed, [inaudible] which is not [inaudible]. Uh, we will, we have a drainage, a drainage issue, we have, uh, uh, [inaudible] that's under [inaudible] at all times, [inaudible]. And, uh, we want to fix this issue, and we want to put in [inaudible].
You're right, see.
And we need to, uh, get that right way to do that. So, that is, uh, all we have to say, you know?
Thank you. Be clear, you purchased all the property, both sides of my right.
Yes.
And if, if we sign over or condemn the right way, if your plan is closed, your, uh, plans are to put in [inaudible].
Drain property.
Drain, you know, [inaudible].
[inaudible].
Thank you. [inaudible]. One member for [inaudible] Southwest, [inaudible]. They're also [inaudible]. Um, [inaudible]. sideways the road, you have a, um, more [inaudible]. But I think the idea of a parking lot by [inaudible] is [inaudible]. Thank you. So, would you, can you [inaudible]?
[inaudible]. Bob Curtis, fifty-four thirty-five, President [inaudible] Road, and however, [inaudible] on the place of one oh nine, uh, [inaudible]. And Jeff Hunt said, when you go out on a road, [inaudible] [inaudible]. That street was [inaudible] nineteen twenty-one, ninety-six years ago. So, in ninety-six years, the county's never seen that, been up that [inaudible] the road or the cross. I'm a neighbor there, so I think what's being requested is, uh, a good thing, and bring more [inaudible] [inaudible]. And if the right way [inaudible].
Thank you. Anyone else who can [inaudible]?
Uh, this area, you know, is, is, and overflowed, that, I mean, parking [inaudible] and [inaudible]. Uh, access and the road off of [inaudible] that [inaudible] to the north, uh, [inaudible] that street [inaudible]. People [inaudible]. There's actually [inaudible]. But access where most used to park, uh, overflow used to park, is [inaudible]. So, it would take, you know, the development, uh, to upgrade that property for parking, I, I don't know. Okay, [inaudible]. It's, uh, it's, uh, still in [inaudible]. But I would even say, uh.
Any other comments from the board?
You find a [inaudible]. About [inaudible].
Yeah.
Yes.
You close it, you have to advertise, you just give it to [inaudible]? There's a procedure, [inaudible].
[inaudible].
Thank you, Madam Actress, please.
I'll take the [inaudible]. 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 [inaudible].
Okay. Are you there?
Right there, buddy. [inaudible]. So, we closed the road, and [inaudible].
I think we're [inaudible].
I'll take that.
We're [inaudible]. [inaudible].
I'm not sure I want to talk about it. Uh, but [inaudible] will they need to have a [inaudible]?
No, the rest of the [inaudible] had, remember the last time we threw out, how to do it, uh, the rest of the [inaudible].
Well, they have a [inaudible].
Five, two, one, [inaudible]. [inaudible].
But won't they have a, a board stand, uh, two or one, that forty-seven, something like about a half an acre or two?
Yeah, one way, yeah, uh, the rest of the document, the rest of the, he did not have to be done in thirty days, so that will be, uh, here to be. He has, I want you to say that, and now, and in, from the discussion, I'd like to say that, that, that the majority of the people here today have been, uh, for years, and, uh, because you have the public to show up and, and pressure a piece, and you do this, to the public. So now, I'll call for those, all the neighbors to say aye. All the folks that sign, motion here. A word of recognition, and a shout, according to the civil school, the resolution is making appreciation, and calling to the first large, uh, military, defense, preservation association, and request it by man, six. Um, I think I'll ask more of these, more of this man, by several, by Congress, or do you want the whole thing to wait?
I would, I'd love, yeah, we, we told them.
Is that your line?
That's my line, I'll play it tomorrow.
And now, right, and that's a vision of ten seconds, by the mission, family, all the neighbors say aye.
Aye.
All the folks that sign, sign, like you say.
Congratulations, and appreciation as well, to the first large chapter of the military vehicle preservation association. Whereas Mayor Kenny Clark is by government, government, or national population, the official tree capital of South, now set by, uh, whereas Mayor Kenny, who should be a period of red forestry, as far as sustainable sustainability, by hosting a Florida car festival in October. Whereas one of the features of the Florida car festival is the tree parade, which showcases the high quality of our community's way of life and way of living. In tree capital parade, specifically as over fifty units represent our true conservation, civic youth, eternal spiritual, and other safety organizations, dark vehicles. Whereas the last three units, that is the first large chapter of the vehicle preservation association, N B P A, and it is a unique truck and weapon interior, that has become an interesting one. It's part of the tree parade, with members of the N B P A bringing vehicles from throughout Florida and Georgia to make them available for others to play, and to paint, or exhibition, and park, capital park, all in the parade. Whereas many military veterans, their families, and other festival goers enjoy seeing, photographing, and learning about historical N B P A vehicles that helped win keys in World War Two, Korea, Vietnam, and Iraq. Whereas some of the vehicles are highly used, played by N B P A members during the Florida car festival, and keeping preserved, with U S armed forces, uh, outlying, daily, and they will be, uh, to honor the border, and the veterans, and the state of Kenny Clark, and keeping appreciation. The members of the first large chapter of the military vehicle preservation association are bringing their historical vehicles to the end of the year, to the death of the six third, Florida car festival Saturday, October twenty-seventh. And encourage all head of counties, and local committees, and try to warm up N B P A members on this entry, and every event, and stop by the state of Kenny Clark, and the missions, on this, eight, seven, eight, ten, eighteen.
There's something coming out, please.
Where your resolution sits, so well, I mean, for, for fifty-nine, you should, uh, um, for the, that, for, for, uh, and that, for you, it's three years, and we appreciate it. And now, it's going to be, uh, um, we will make this, uh, that's what we're planning, we need to, and help, uh, a visiting, uh, member of the camp, that supports, uh, you know, over short, I need to, to keep tree parade, uh, and they would, uh, here, and this, uh, for, uh, all that, we, uh, we take that, and I think it would be well received, in the, in the, kind of, uh, community, and, uh, if this could be one of the, for this, work, white worship, and, uh, I follow.
And I, I, I appreciate that, of course, and I appreciate you, while you're here, um, I will thank you for your meaningful years of community support. Um, that's, uh, we, uh, we are very appreciative of that.
Then, you, you have, uh, uh, pets still coming over, right? You should, nationwide? Well, actually, Florida, we have, uh, a couple of members, in nationwide, I'm gonna double down, so, sure. And, uh, last year, we had about twenty-four vehicles, uh, we won, uh, Thursday morning, finished up, um, helicopter, um, lunch, and, uh, this year, we're, we're, thank you, okay. So, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks for watching. I'm going to, for, 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 uh...
You got a mic, and that's a vision of peace, and that's a vision of peace, and we're going to discuss it, and not all of those things, aye.
Aye.
All of those things, aye, like you say.
Uh, that's fair. Not large, uh, for visitors, lots of new convention, what do you say?
Yeah, bring that right there, do it.
Me and him, fine.
Yeah, he took it up. We're gonna put a line there, uh, for, please, for anything to, uh, take it around, and that's, that's, uh, yeah, okay. You can add that, too.
All right, I'll pick your right. I'm leaving.
Till then, I will state, three twelve, is there a money to the street?
Well, sure, yeah.
Money, that's a vision, and it must be for him, all the folks say aye.
Aye.
All the folks say aye, like you say, I will show, only consider approval of the budget transfer from General Funds Reserve, which is fifty, in the amount nine thousand nine hundred eighty-two dollars, to cover the increase in that case caused by the month of September twenty-eighteenth, as suggested by Daniel, well, tell me his finance, you're right. And then, if you want, say, you know, if, if they live in, uh, that's, that's, uh, okay.
All right.
Is there a money here?
Oh, yeah.
And what you, that's a vision, please, by the mission, for him, all the folks say aye.
Aye, but I have a question. And here, I wish, one question, I know money, in, next to the public, that's here, and it's over, uh, all the, we, we, that's, uh, that's, uh...
It was not, it was not injury, uh, as far as I know, so, I think it's just something that we take at the end of this fiscal year, that some of these towns, um, that in one, that we don't know, it will have a fight, I, I didn't get to the end of the year. And I think it's the ones that are not at the depth of this day, so you all know, you, and then you did it one day, it's, 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 uh... Any others, come? Not, all of those say aye.
Aye.
All the folks say aye, like you say, public question, our non-constitutional, our, our, advisory committee reports, there are non-constitutional officers, others, government, and, and the thirteen, the fourteen, stuff with the board, interested in courthouse, public lot. Now, Jerry, uh, next, uh, I didn't want to go in, you know, that I had any questions, uh, from people that sit, on, like, the city, in security out there, but what happened is, you know, that, uh, earthworm, uh, upstairs, because, and, people apart, and, you know, he is not real, I, I, here, it's not a lot of heart. Uh, they, he told me, that, actually, saw, on the street, the people, the boys and I, or their relatives, uh, had, he, he got far, get, uh, I'll be waiting. That's what you're short, this is how, he's, he's done that task, he's back here, and he's, he's there, and, they want, uh...
He's got, uh, I mean, I think, for, 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 it won't solve, run the problem, brings the, they, uh, I, I, that's, that's, I, yes, um, I think we already dealt with that one, uh, before. I, I would, uh, uh, you know.
That's, if I get, I'll be, uh, maybe, maybe, uh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yes, we just brought the door, please.
I'm, I'm, if I, if I walk, okay, and I walk through this, and I know that's what he talks about, but I've got a question, is that one way, or do they go both ways?
No, it's one way, you're saying, one way.
Do we have the one-way sign here?
Yeah.
Do we have a one-way sign? Okay.
So then, I'm, I'm, Roger?
I would think so, um, uh... I got an idea, probably not legal. Have you ever, have you?
Contact the security cameras, that, that we know who he is.
Oh, we cameras, mm, okay. No, I got an idea. We cameras, we have preferred parking spots, and we work, uh, for the judge, county judge, and then we change it, and make it available to everybody. Just think about the, um, that, you can re-institute, re-secure parking spots there, on that, on that lane, or the alternative, uh, you got another issue would be, if you have enough fuel, result, park on this lane, and, uh, on that. That way, they have to park on the second lane, and they have to, and they have to, uh, 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 you know, I'm not a traffic person at all, but I did have, uh, that, when I walked through there, you know, I'm looking, I, I, somebody else coming by through there, and there's no reason why I'm through there, you know, and, and it's work, I mean, you know, that, 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 you know.
Well, there's a parking, uh, lot, a lot, uh, uh, and, um, I have an idea, to have a job, something, something, too.
Well, I know that there were complaints, and you remember, that, you know, that there were complaints about that, I guess, it's, it's, it's worse, or, really, I, I know the other courthouse, um, specifically, my best, um, uh, reserve parking for, uh, courthouse, you know?
Well, one thing is, when they, they drive that parking lot, and they try to give you space, and they're not part of my, and they do the, I mean, their, because, and, and I don't want you to, they, they, because, I feel like the second lane, so...
Sure, that's, that's, well, that would be very impossible.
It would be impossible, and I, I don't, my name, I don't, but, but, anybody else, I don't.
Whatever, lay that out, drop it, just, 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 uh, and, and, uh, you know, it's a way to preserve all those, because, uh, and, 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 you know, where people can...
All my neighbors want to preserve, a lot of...
Oh, yeah, here, I, yeah, yeah. See, that, that, that's really, when they did it, it's really true, and I think that it is, you know, an issue recognized, and, uh, as you approach the steps, um, no, it would not help people to park, put it to Green Street, but, uh, traffic should not be going too bad, after it turns off of Green Street, anyway, I'm, I'm, just, the rest of the, uh, open. Uh, I think it was, more, I speak on there, uh, and, they have, you know, the fastest ones, where you don't have to do a, a walk-in steering, and drill it into, into paint up there, and that would help slow down, and, uh, would be a great, big, uh, there were just, big, big ones there.
You're talking about the bomb, instead of the hunk? The hunk is, please, hide, you're talking about the bomb?
The bomb, that, uh, two foot, so, uh, uh, they, they, that, that, before.
I don't like that, uh, but he's young.
Yeah, that's easy, that's compromise, and then, uh, then they, it's not a spot, yeah.
We just, uh, we did this, uh, outside, and we, and all, yeah. You know, frankly, come from a hard, uh, city, that, uh, people, we, something, I see, you know, it just, doesn't look like a seat, you stand on, uh, the rest of, and a vehicle drives by, towards the seat, and it, it looks like, uh, it's two thousand feet, and, uh, uh, you know, that's, he, who is recognized, and trying, and, and, uh, and see, you know, these years, uh, you know, I, I agree that, that, you know, I mean, that, the rest of, you know, the lanes look like a seat, often, uh, so, you know, you know, huh?
Or twice, I, but I know one thing, a daddy's present, he'll get some of that, when he takes on, uh, he, he don't think that, if I, he's gonna do it. Hey, Eddie Rint, now, we don't fly, and we not fly, but, oh, my, hey, you're true.
Well, I think I would rather, uh, spend a little bit of money on a seat bump, this tie, one of our, uh, fifty, so, shit out here, but, uh, since you're making your call back, uh, I had asked, um, you to talk with, uh, the city, concerning, uh, pretty, around the courthouse, did you notice this, uh, what does that say?
Did they take you to, to question, when they're, taking a lot of, without, like, you know, uh, I brought it up.
Okay, I hope they don't forget that, because I get a lot, I'm, I stand on a complainer, because when you come down, when you walk three streets, right there, from the courthouse, now, it's just, the, the cars, uh, uh, I'm way over the hill, and, uh, I have to wait for you to get around, and there's, there's, they need to be more, uh, like, uh, okay, so, I think what we could do is, is get some, some staff, some, recognize, like, you know, just, be small.
Well, uh, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I don't feel very off the wall, or, but I'm not, or, I'm, I think, that, that's, yeah, I think, sort of, going through the main road, and then stop, call, again, and stop, start, do this, uh, do we have any paintings on the, on this, uh, lane we're talking about, basically, or, or, if, if, I don't think it is. But we don't have a lane there about thirty feet wide, which is, and, and, uh, what, uh...
If, if you all drop, drop down, then you'll do here, uh, I think if you all drop, there, from there, I want...
They already keep that, uh, uh, uh...
No, we don't stop, but I would, uh, 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 uh...
I, I, I'm all, uh, we, uh, uh, uh... Uh...
Hump.
Hump, yeah, and, and we thought it was some tank for, um, we talked some way, some tank, uh, uh, I like the, 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 sixteen, that, your home, the director, the director, the owner, the manager, the district, who appears, who, who, and payment, and rules of taxes.
Uh, good point, thank you, I appreciate that, and, uh, uh, I do have, um, something this one, I've gone on, I've been working with, with, uh, all of you as well, um, and I'd like to just give a quick overview of the, on the insurance at the district right now, any issues that we had, um, just some information relative to how you all have, uh, are dealing with flooding concerns down in Taylor County, we have about seven counties, and then our district actually, you know, to worry, um, and I think that some, uh, groundwater and rain falls information, and I'd like to, as well, with that. Um, just as a quick overview, um, uh, for the, uh, for the district itself, the district itself, if you're not aware, the district is made up of almost eighty-seven hundred square miles, uh, we're certainly the fifth largest district in the state, um, from a water being as a district perspective, um, but we are the smallest geographic, um, and most years this works as well, uh, but we do try to do the most, we make up all or part of fifteen counties, uh, maybe share six counties with three other water being as a district, or four or five, um, and certainly I know you all are well aware that the majority of our land use, uh, and our economy is made up of agriculture, um, there's both traditional agricultural crops, and, uh, in the area of poultry, um, timber as well, and major, um, river, water, water land, and, uh, but we are blessed here in this part of the state, we've got over three hundred springs, um, in our area, freshwater springs, and, um, the largest number, actually, highest concentration of springs anywhere in the US, uh, as well as the largest concentration, about maybe the largest springs of any other district, and also the, uh, highest concentration, first magnitude of large household, um, springs as well, and we've got thirteen river banks, um, across our district. One of the major issues that we're looking at, um, our water supply assessment, which actually is a planning document, um, that was recently approved in July by the governing board, uh, but it actually is a, uh, position, the planning documents will look at projected growth, um, over the term of twenty fifteen up to twenty thirty-five, year, uh, twenty year documents that evaluate growth in groundwater and impact on our water people over that time period. I've talked a little bit more about that, just if you want, I think you're aware of it, um, but also our springs grant, um, and our river grant, I know the county, um, in, uh, in this area, this is some of our river grants, uh, we rest that, uh, we've been in contact with, uh, concerning some of the flooding issues to all our people, um, and we certainly would, we have, uh, entertained considering a proposal, uh, to address some of those flooding issues, um, and, and to mention that, uh, one of our grants, uh, with the, we also got our springs grant, we've been very blessed, uh, as I mentioned, with the number of springs that we have in our district, um, we've been very blessed by the governor and legislature to appropriate funding over the years, um, since twenty thirteen, we've had almost twenty-five million dollars in springs, um, to address water quality, water supply for our springs, for the, uh, restoration effort, um, timber, hopefully that, near the county, um, as well as, uh, some of the other concerns, whether it be some, uh, clean water, infrastructure improvement, um, or even water supply with the project also, um, and then our agricultural pro- projects that we have, um, today, we've got about twenty-six projects that have been funded, we're certainly waiting on approval for our twenty-eighteen permit, um, of the legislative budget committee, um, for this year, um, with our project, our springs project, we've submitted a request for, uh, a little over twenty-eight million dollars this year, uh, the park, the island protection has refused those projects, uh, they recommended a little over ten point one million dollars, um, in funding to the legislative budget committee, and we're waiting their approval for, uh, this project. Right now it appears that we've got six, six projects, um, which, which, you know, about ten million dollars, um, in funding, plus, um, and two contingency projects that will also embrace the agriculture industry as well, uh, and those are actually, another six million dollars for those two additional projects, so, uh, very hopeful of getting it on the ground, uh, in the future, uh, some of the benefits of these projects, um, we've seen is, uh, about twelve million gallons a day of water state, um, through our springs projects, and the reduction of about twenty-four million pounds, uh, less fertilizer being blocked, uh, through efficiency improvement, particularly with our, um, agricultural, uh, projects that we have, as well as some of our clean water projects, by life, and, and, um, and an additional thirty-eight million gallons a day of recharge to our Florida office, so we'll continue to look forward to working with our springs project. We also have, um, our new groundwater model, which is, uh, compared, uh, uh, or this new today, uh, this one, uh, our new groundwater model, which is called, uh, the North Florida, Southeast Georgia, um, groundwater model, or N S A for short, uh, we just had this model underway in late October, early November, uh, that model will actually evaluate withdrawal over the entire Florida and, uh, Florida and October, I don't have a man, presentation, but Florida and October actually extends up in Southern Carolina, um, and then into, uh, Eastern Alabama and Southeast Georgia, um, and then also down, certainly into Ohio, Ohio, and here to Florida, um, but this model will evaluate water withdrawal, um, in terms of, of issues, uh, within those areas, not only for us, but for part of, for Georgia's, uh, impact on, as well as, uh, impact on our neighbors, the, uh, over the same offshore and conditions where they're permitted, we have, we work agreements with them, um, to evaluate cross boundary, um, of the use permit, with that, and, uh, for that model, we're very hopeful for, with that, we just evaluate as well as our projects, where do we cite our projects, our offer recharge, our offer development projects, so that we can get the most paying tax pay dollars that we spend, the project, and maximize recharge, uh, in those areas. We're also continuing, I have to continue to work with our minimal flow, minimal water levels, uh, development, looking at those levels that are necessary for ecosystem, uh, restoration, uh, or ecosystem, um, benefit out here, as well as considering, uh, the water use for humans, uh, in the area, so that ongoing project, uh, will be committing our, our revised by the water risk, or N F L development, uh, in November, which is the park, the island protection. Um, not, thank you, uh, one project, one of the projects that we've worked with, uh, on up here, uh, under our river grant, uh, project River stands, and acronym stands for, um, regional initiatives, value, and final resources, and, uh, it's a state grant program that the district had now for about six years, uh, to work with our county, uh, some of the projects that we've had over here, uh, are the horse, uh, capital sewer service project, which actually looks at making, um, the main testing system, including optional ized sewer, uh, offer our springs group, and, uh, wrote it, um, light flood mitigation project, looking at some of the restoration, like, uh, you know, earlier, that, that spring, as well as, uh, flood mitigation, um, in that area, and both those projects are, and our steam hatch, that tank elimination system, um, eliminating about, uh, forty testing systems, um, and benefits there, um, and consolidating those, the essentialized sewer system, um, for free, certainly benefits of water quality aspect, and I do, spring, um, restoration effort, looking at, um, those strange restoration, still removal debris, um, parking lot, renovation area, um, as well as, uh, reducing erosion, uh, for, for that, in that area as well, so all those budgets are in spark, we, uh, and we're appreciative of the opportunity to work with, uh, with that. And then, where we're looking at going forward, um, certainly the flooding and high water concerns are major, and, 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 uh, related to that, uh, issues, uh, issues, uh, our building, uh, not on that, it's just the moment, but we'll go ahead, for the sake of time, uh, we supply, um, we are increasing our outreach and our education efforts, um, through a number of different ways, one is, is, especially to our local government, um, also in our, with our stakeholders, various communities, we're just trying to get them to be aware about what the district does, um, and not only what the district does, but what our stakeholders are doing, our community governments, our agricultural producers, um, and, uh, what they are doing for water quality aspects, as well as water supply, water conservation, whatever, um, to make people aware, things are happening, they may not be aware of, of issues ever, uh, certainly working with other legislators, and making them aware, uh, of the, of, of these projects here, um, and then we're using a variety of different media. I myself, I'm old school, um, I'm, I'm just being kind of writing Facebook stuff, my kids tell me to F old school, and, that off the link, um, but we do have a communications director, uh, in Twenty River, she's a few years younger than I am, and so she is very engaged in social media, uh, she does a great job in giving our messages out, um, and one of the things that I would encourage you to do, uh, that we just initiated about three weeks ago, is called Off Water Alert, because of our higher groundwater conditions that we're seeing right now, um, as we get these storm cells that move across the district, and, and, we're blessed with rainfall, and I am appreciative of that, um, but it does change our offer level, and if you could go on our website and sign up, so that on a week's basis, you receive a notification on there, and it lets you know what those updates are, you know, our groundwater level falling, or are they decreasing, or on where you perceive rainfall, um, that's, uh, that's, 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 and certainly we want to continue to build our partnerships with, with, whatever we do, once it's signed, thanks, it's reliable. Um, this is where I wanted to get to with our high water condition, um, this is our recent Off Water map that was presented, uh, at our, our last board meeting, these are our groundwater levels up through, according to that timber, certainly, for, for, uh, Tom Mary, who is our, our, he's a doctor, and they're, they're presenting information on, on the basis of our governing board, and what you can see for Taylor County there is our groundwater level, the majority of the county are in a high category, um, certainly our coastal communities, and the eastern part of the, uh, that dark blue that you see there, um, represents areas that we have, uh, where our groundwater levels, in many places, are already, for example, ninety percent, uh, what that means is that over record, period of record that we have, um, that less than ten percent of the time, we said groundwater wasn't tested, lower, so that I had it getting higher than where they are at now, uh, we've got some areas of the district, not here in Taylor County, but in Fifty County, and part of Alamo County, uh, where you're setting record highs of, uh, some groundwater, which, uh, one of the things that I want to point out, um, think of last year, prior to Irma getting here, October, or August twenty seventeen, what we had noticed for the month of August, is our rainfall at that time, um, we received about six point one inches of rain over here, um, August of this year, we received eleven point eight inches of rain, uh, in the area, and, uh, thirty year average, it's about eight point six inches of rain for that month, so we didn't see, um, considerable, we're at about three point one, three point two inch, uh, surplus of rainfall right now in our area, uh, this is data that's gathered, gathered through what's called N C R A, it's a digital mapping system, that looks at rainfall, uh, cells, that go across the vision, and, uh, we're able to, we don't have to go out and pick a manual, we actually have manual measuring stations that validate what we're seeing, um, through N C R A on it, uh, what we see for about three months, rainfall, surplus of deficits, um, June, August of this year, we had, uh, areas of this county that were between five and fifteen inches, uh, of rainfall, surplus of rainfall, over our running average, thirty year average, um, southwest of the area here, we've got areas with a greater percentage, um, that are showing that, okay, that's the last year, twenty seventeen, that same time period, we were looking at about anywhere from a five percent deficit to about normal rainfall, so we're definitely, our ground, our groundwater and our rainfall condition, uh, are above normal for this year, and, if you are well aware, that, uh, with, with, particularly the low lining areas, and I heard, mentioned discussion earlier about other red areas on, on the park, and, and, so, you know, we want to try to make people aware that these are the conditions, um, which is very blessed, we have not had a possible system come through, um, it would be very devastating right now, not just for any flooding aspects, but also for, uh, tree damage, uh, we've got many, uh, that, 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 uh, so we do want to make everyone aware of that, and, uh, certainly we have information on our website, which is Off Water Alert, those are the, uh, on there, um, we also have Flooding Alert, we have a variety of different alerts, uh, that are available on our website, um, even extending beyond, we do have a lot of conditions that we're doing burning in the area, you can notice that we're doing control burn, uh, not much of that going on right now, um, but completely against it. Uh, moving ahead, one, we, we mentioned our water supply assessment, that, that is a planning document, um, a little difficult to talk about this right now, especially the regulations that just given our groundwater, um, and rainfall conditions, uh, but, planning has to occur, uh, it's an ongoing basis, whether it's wet, wet conditions or dry conditions, um, this actually looks at projected growth, meaning, uh, over the senior horizon, and, because agriculture is our largest water user in this district, uh, projected growth has that, uh, occur, uh, our projected growth going from a hundred and fifty big gallons a day to thousand and ten, uh, about a hundred and fifty-one big gallons a day, is your groundwater projection, uh, surface work, uh, so that's a considerable amount of growth for this area, and, and you can see, uh, through the other sectors, our water issues, uh, commercial and industrial, and even our investment self-apply, that are the three that we're looking at, from an agricultural perspective, Swanee is projected to have the highest growth from irrigated acreage production standpoint of each district in the state, almost forty percent over the next twenty years, which is great, we want to grow the economy in this area, um, but we as a district have a plan for that available water supply to afford, because that is, uh, certain, and, and, so, that's typically agricultural water, um, from, compared to the district, if you look at this high chart for, say, Saint John's, where it is, uh, the actual sectors of the high chart are almost completely reversed, from agricultural to the net self-apply, which is public supply, because of that, where, where, so they're projected to have more growth in that area as well, and some of the other areas, uh, around the state are, uh, but from Swanee, um, we're projecting, um, greater agricultural growth, and, I'll be honest with you, personally, I have a background, I'm glad to be, that's much of the deal with agricultural producers, and, and, some of the people that, that, right now. Moving ahead, want to mention some of the recommendations that were presented to our governing board, and extended by our governing board, uh, the areas you see here in white blue, those are our, uh, were our existing water resource caution areas, uh, this is primarily just upper swine, and then also in the, uh, Santa Bay region as well, two thousand and ten, the water, uh, the water management district, um, had a water supply plan, and also a water supply assessment, um, evaluated, and adopted, um, and what it identified was four areas in that part of our district where projected growth, there was in position groundwater, going forward, what we have seen in our recent evaluation is that there are six springs and three, uh, two river stations, sorry, that are showing that there's some potential for impact, given this projected growth, um, there's a potential impact, uh, to our groundwater, solely relying on groundwater for our projected growth, uh, so we need to evaluate that, so the recommendation in this area, and just what we have seen, is those areas that are green, we're expanding the water resource caution out to the eastern boundaries of the Swan River District, and, uh, the, uh, the, uh, County area, uh, that was one of our recommendations, and then moving ahead, our second recommendation on this, is the area that you see in the green shade there, um, we're considering that to be our western planning region, um, additionally, you see that area that's cross paths along the, uh, the boundary of the river there, and the county, looking at those same concerns, um, going forward, where we're seeing this potential impact, we want to evaluate that, and that's made, at some point to come, in water resource caution areas based upon evaluation, if it is, we're required by statute to declare that as a water resource caution area, uh, over the next year, uh, to do that, but, the, the recommendation going forward with this, that area that you see in, in, over western side of the river there, that is going to become our western planning region, in other words, we'll work with our stakeholders, we'll have the, with the, with your projected growth, um, what your operational plans are going forward for water, um, to gather input into that, so that we can help plan for whatever growth, or whatever projects you're thinking about going forward, uh, and that's why we're calling it a planning region, and with that, that includes my presentation, um, I'll be happy to answer any questions that I may be able to, um, if, and, uh, if not, I like to, uh, pause, and allow the mail, the question to, to.
I've got a couple of questions.
Goodness.
With all of the water that we're seeing, are we wanting to have, or, they call, open up, does that have, what impact does that have on, on?
Typically what you will see, um, and it really depends, it's hard to, it's not a specific answer, um, and I, I hate this, I hate this response, because I get on the water, urban, that, that, it's all, it's all a can, um, but, a lot of it depends on the overlying structure, typically the way they call it, open up, is you'll get a somewhat depression area for water to congregate, um, rainwater typically more acidic, and it moves through the, the overlying soil, and then hits our line law, underlay here, our car area, um, it finds channels through that line law, well, the acidity of rainfall then degradates the line law, and so over time, you get the solution holes that open up, well, eventually what will happen with that is if you get enough rainfall, that line law will thin down, and then give the way, and then you get a, a sinkhole there, sometimes. So there's a number of different ways, I've seen, seen calls open up, and I've seen that as well, where we have pond areas, and just sheer weight of the water sitting on the pond area, can make the line law give away, I've seen, I've seen, they call it open up in dry conditions, because what happens then is, you have those weakened areas, okay, and as our groundwater gets pulled down, it takes away the pressure that holds up that line law, but then you get, you're building. But then you get bigger building structure or something in the area, and over time, that sheer weight will cause the line law to fall. I would say, I would be on, and this is coming from me personally, um, whenever our groundwater conditions receive to get back to somewhere of a normal range, you're probably going to be. And kind of that's not dependent, but just having lived in this area of my life, it's coming from personal experience and an academic knowledge.
Well, you know, you read about all of this, large sinkholes and central pools, and then potentially in this area that is not known, we have huge malls, what I call malls, but I'm sure most of you don't get into the mall, so they are very small, so we don't reach.
As you are.
They're small, old.
Right, as you are. I'm sure you're all very aware, um, a few years back, uh, particularly around the San Diego area, uh, whenever the strawberry divisions were doing cross range protection. And that was, what created those sinkholes at that time, was that sudden drawdown, um, and removal of the support, where our groundwater provided support, uh, for our line law. Uh, and the removal of that, the drawdown of that, and then the sheer application of moving that water to the surface, um, and whenever people are doing cross range protection, they had to do it for a number of days, and that area, probably because of twenty thirteen, when we had that freeze of three, four, five years, um, that it created those additional weights of top, um, because that, you know, it compromised the integrity of the line law that's supporting the area. Fortunately, that's one thing that we decide to consider when we are issuing the stuff that we are meant to evaluate, um, we look at adjacent landings, um, we can't foretell when a sinkhole will open up, but we do give indications as to, with our knowledge, in way of seeing folks that are in the area that is wanting to develop.
Well, thank you, Tommy. Thanks for the things for each other.
Yes, sir.
And I hope that you can, uh, uh, that's all for today. Uh, I have a couple of questions on, how are the other counties, counties that are in any special, uh, activities that they're doing, their planning, causing, uh, you know, town council, the county anyway, uh, uh, others, are you, you're at the sinkhole this morning, you're, uh, we're representatives, uh, and that maybe you want to, you speak more off later, but, um, are there, not new, or have you ever before, have you, uh, is there anything, any, uh, anything that can be done, do you define, uh?
That's what we need, we need a long-term solution. Yes, sir. And, and why, I was actually having a meeting in Dixie County last week, uh, on Thursday, um, and that surface floods, um, probably, uh, for seventy to that need. And we as a district are happy to provide, take choice remaining, um, and in a lot of cases, like with our river grant project, our governing board is very supportive of helping our communities with that. Many of those projects are for units, which is that, like, or flood mitigation, um, efforts. Um, and we're encouraging our counties to look at their long-range planning, um, in areas, um, we are seeing, I will tell you, we are seeing impacts now, um, from areas where activities were grandfathered in, or in certain areas where it's grandfathered in, um, and unpermitted, unpermitted development was allowed to occur, um, in those areas. Some cases, in responding to these seven counties, we've seen issues where, uh, a landowner may have had activity on their end that they did not come into the district and so they came to permit for, um, and that can create enforcement issues. Um, but, you know, right now is not the time for enforcement right now, it's not to try to work with people to minimize property damage, um, with that. So certainly the long range, uh, longer range training, it was, I'm really glad it worked well. And I think that's what the joy we had in mind and looking through our river grant show report is, is evaluating and the engineering done, from the study done, um, we have available technology now, our light R map, which are all available for all of our counties now. Um, and that's a, it's a great planning to be able to look at that from a large scale, um, and evaluate what path of water, where our low lying areas for that. Um, and part of our outreach is to go back out and we're developing some information, um, looking at groundwater conditions and looking at our rainfall so that we can hold or work with the county and the city to hold a count all these days. We're coming in the storm season, our groundwater levels are subject to that. If we get two inches of rainfall in this neighborhood, you can expect these conditions. You know, and that's a basic undertaking, but it is, it's a commitment to working.
It is, and what we hear, everyone else hears, so, but, but I mean, what we say.
It's your fault.
No, no, that's good, but, uh, so, some of the things, things that have happened, uh, we're now eligible for certain grants, probably didn't have the engineering study, which cost a lot of money in itself, uh, and are some of those grant programs, uh, where the, the main, uh, engineering.
Yes, sir.
Very as well.
We've changed some of that, particularly our river grant, um, to where, I mean, we, I will tell you, from a district perspective, our expenditure of taxpayer dollars, and I know you all fall under this point as well, isn't it, it's true. So if we have a project or a study committed to a, um, proposal perspective, we have to have some type of validation, um, for the benefits, you know, for the taxpayer dollars that are on the drive, um, with that. Um, and granted, our county, I mean, our county's already for challenge, so we do know that the city here, uh, so we try to have some latitude with our community, um, working with that in our staff.
And with the local land as well?
Yes, sir, that's as well. We don't require a local land, it's great if we can, we can get that, uh, but with our ready, that's making communities, we don't require a, a local land.
But you know, we're a rural county with, uh, I represent all these places, or, uh, or private landowners, uh, is there any, any, uh, you know, or any, you know, I don't want to put any fingers in any, you know, private development or anything like that. Because there was some development that's been on, uh, we've been regulated, no one regulated, and now it's causing, um, water issues, new years later, is there any, um, action that Swan River should take, you know?
Yes, particularly if it's, uh, what you've done at a period whenever permitting was required, um, and then also on the compliance side, if someone does, I mean, I mean, a permit. Um, we're required to have built, um, and we have compliance, we should go back out, granted, there are also smaller staff working in the state, but we have limited staff, uh, of the auto workers that try to pay for some of that, more on the client side, to go back out and validate that this is a local plan, this is a local structure, and it's ready for some.
Oh, so this is one, that's one area that really needs to work, and, oh, is, and when you run it, it's something that I was wondering, you have this problem, and, and just, um, you raise that.
Related to rain?
Yes.
Okay. Every four years.
Yes, and then, um, clean saddle, uh, clean, uh, uh, clean, uh, I think, um, clean saddle, clean fire, I have a, a, a problem there. And that's, I'm somewhat, we're hoping to, you know, hopefully, we should.
I'll be following up. I think I've got one over there, I just love you, it's going to be great, I would love you. I need, right now, my water's real high, still a cross the place, now, I really need a representative to be with me and sit out there and look at that, where people on my deal, where we're at with, um, I would love someone to contact me, we'll follow up, I appreciate it. And I'll turn to everybody who wants.
Thank you.
Excuse me, thank you. Uh, just to give you a little bit of background, I'm, uh, lifelong head of county resident, I'm a four ranger, the state's top in high school, I'm a junior student too.
Hello.
terrible student, yeah, uh, don't be, don't try to be nice, thank you, but, uh, uh, the honor, the honor really to be able to represent head of county over the board or, uh, I'm, I'm passionate about this county, I, I'm, I'm learning, uh, so much about water and water resources, and I want to encourage, uh, the commission today. Uh, number one, you guys know where your issues are, because a lot of times the public is calling you and ringing your, ringing your ear, and, uh, and unfortunately, we don't realize that we might have flooding problems or conditions in, in flood zone areas until we have, I've worked on something already now. Uh, the water, most likely is not going to receive for long, okay? And I'll tell you why, because the water is at ninety percent, so that water's right at the top, a lot of them, so where we're used to having that water soak down to the sand and go away and not be, it's most likely not going to get for a long. We have another, uh, tropical system that's come through, that water is going to be right back there at seven o'clock, so we, so you guys know about ordinances and regulations and everything else, and I'm not a big supporter of regulations by any means, but we've got to be wise and smart about where we allow people to put their homes, if they come to us. And, I mean, I was out on the beach road just two weeks ago, and I was looking on these a bunch of live books, and I'm sure I've loved the learning live book pretty soon, they're free, but unfortunately, the ground is like this right here. And those house though, we just didn't water that, where now I found both in and not. And that's just poor planning, I'm not saying on y'all's part, maybe the county needs new problems, uh, part, but it's just poor thinking on our, on our people, just not, not claiming it, because there's a reason why that's the brain there. And I don't know about y'all, but I remember as a, uh, a younger man, Lily Pat's being out on ninety eight, but this truck, I'm full of water all the time, racing down the beach road, I've never seen that. And our weather cycles are cyclical, we all know that, sometimes we think that they're short three years of time, maybe four or five years, but really, the longer term forecast and stuff are maybe over a thirty year period. And we possibly are at a beginning point of a winter, weather time. So in my business, I'm planning for that. I'm trying to buy dry wood, I'm trying to go to places where I know that I can operate with it, and I'm, I'm still operating in those places that are, that are wetter, but I'm waiting to dry up a little bit, and that's just training on my part. And so, we all know that there's opportunities to receive these river drains, I'm, I'm, I'm in O P, now I'm working those drains, and there's counties all over our district that are getting lots and lots of money to help, to alleviate flooding problems, help fix roads. Uh, one thing I will encourage our county to do, is maybe look at, uh, sewer street. I know we have a lot of our residents on, safety tanks have come down the line, those safety systems, uh, all safety systems that are being put in today will be outdated in another decade. Remind me by that, I thought, uh, the system will be totally different, and it'll be very very expensive to install those. I mean, we're going from maybe four, five thousand dollars installation a day for a new building, you're looking at maybe ten to twenty thousand dollars with an anaerobic system and stuff that they come up with. Your work, I mean, groundwater, but it's expensive. Something we need to be looking at, the county is not planning, is how can we, be proactive, how can we go and ask for a river grant or a spring grant on the sewer street in this county? How can we project on roads, where, you know, so much of y'all's time, I'm sure, uh, is putting out little bit of fire, putting out little bit of things, you know, we're worried about dog parts of the beach, we're worried about this, and I know it's a real issue that we deal with as a county. But so many towns, we're putting out those little bit fires and as they, as they come, we very seldom we take back and get back and look at the future of where we think we're going, and how can we add somebody's rock song? I struggled with the vote this year of extending that water caution area all the way to the eastern side of Swan River. I really struggled with that, because what that does is, that puts extra scrutiny on those people that live there that want to use water. And the crosshatch area that you just showed you on the west side of the river, that's not in our county, but yet it can creep over you. And so I would encourage this board, as the leader of my community, to be thinking, how can we tap in some of these resources that we have available to, to be able to hit that off? How can we have better water quality on all kinds of fronts? And don't just think small, think big, think big, because what we do today matters twenty years from now. And the policy that you make today affects what we do twenty years from now. And I don't know about y'all, but twenty years is going to take off the good life there. Expect life, it doesn't matter, it doesn't really matter. And I don't want to have to be sitting on board or pressuring a board member when I'm not there, not to vote on, or, or to vote on the caution areas, because the choices that we make, what we use on water, what they affect the spring and everything else, I don't think nothing. That is a big priority by the Florida D P, of what that water quality like on those rivers and the spring. What we do way over here affects not just what happens on the Swan River, but that happens for the Union River, the Offala River, and Holloway River, all that matters, and all that's taken into consideration. Because what I've learned in our, in our, uh, in our studies and everything else that I've been, uh, uh, it's been a privilege to be able to understand and learn, is that Oscar, that part of Oscar, like you, like you said, it goes all the way up to Charleston, South Carolina, comes all the way down to Georgia, over and out down and all, all of Florida, that's, that's a lot of rain. And what they do in about off the Georgia affects what we do down here. And what they do in Jacksonville affects what we do over here. And so we all got to be thinking, and even though we're, we're a small county and we have limited resources, I realize that, but we need to be thinking, and we need to be tapping into the resources, resident resources that we get, to be able to help us prevent, if the prevent exists, there's got, just prevent. And I would just encourage you, I have a check for the county, just to pay me a little tax, it's a privilege always to give, give you guys that.
A little tenure.
Yeah, absolutely, that'd be fine, that'd be fine. But I just wanted to encourage the board to be thinking on those lines, and I want to encourage the board as well, to tap in to your representatives over there, but I can do anything for you guys, if there's a concern, let us know. And Hugh is a champion of, of the, our small county, so this is a great meeting compared to what you had in Dixie County last week, when we said, we're a slow down there, so.
Quick question for you, I love the thought, think big, but I, I picked up on something that you said, a river grant, a six road, uh, so give me an example of maybe county that's got that, because we have so many companies that need to replace it. Is this something that we can follow in the river?
I'm, 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 you know, I'll be right there, we're a bit too much, I'm, I'm, I'm not getting up there or something, but yes, if it, if it has something to do with flooding and water controls and other things, and folks have a tendency to do that, because if you don't have the right side of the water, you're blocking it up. You have, you, you have two big of a color, but science is there and ability, there's, there's plenty available that we just need to be proactive, because I see them tell us all, I definitely have the picture, the picture all the time, that small counties like ours, hey, Dixie, uh, even somebody down in the county, they're getting their share and I'm paying, head of county, you know, I, I, it, it, it pains me to see that we have one project out of twenty five, where we have three counties that have three whole projects coming out. You know what, people of head of county, I mean, we're just speaking, we're just deserving that, of that, of those grants from anybody else, but we just need to be proactive with that.
Thank you.
And I'm sure the, the commission will go out all week.
Anything, anything else?
Thank you. Yes, sir. Let's get them, let's get the pictures in, I got to get the work.
Appreciate y'all being.
Appreciate y'all, yes, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
Sure appreciate it.
Yeah, I'm.
You can get it too. Come on, make your food look real. He's there, he's good.
Mm-hmm. No, I didn't, no. Okay, you are? Good to see you, Mr. Rich. Thanks a lot. Uh, I figured Mr. Rich was, you know, has a good affinity.
You got a check for us, David?
The checks that I offer aren't going to have as much weight as the checks in there, it'll be a personal check. Um, just, just a highlight, uh, the mission of the board of officers, that foresting is equal from the dangers of wildfire and managed forestry, we do a short tour, ten, ten days, sure sure that they're available to use in the winter. Basically, all of that saving and up till, I'm going to be there for your first, so, and whatever way you want to, uh, we have all kind of, basically. Uh, we provide fire protection in Taylor County through a formative briefing with the county, which is very clean on a hand and, 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 and county and foresters for emergency response. Um, we have four, five, two trucks, which in main team, which is four sixteen, y'all care for, motor, one five. We got one eighty right now, we're having several bags in there, two, two big trucks. Five ounce water derrers that we use on wildfires, and we also support county fire with that, the rural area, we're not, have to, over, often, so. Uh, seven hundred fifty gallon brush truck, and a three hundred gallon brush truck, that we use to scout and, and suppress the fires in Taylor County. In addition to our foresters, we need to be fire protection programs, we need to provide equipment, fire departments that rule or no talk, to help any of their work. For our wildfire activity, we have forty-seven fires in Taylor County last year. And those forty-seven fires are. We got one with that, I can look that up. It's the lower number with a lower number of acres. Well, from here, we have seventy-five, the car's one hundred ninety-five, we got some pretty good, lots of fires here before last, and these, those drives. In addition, we're giving two of those by the Taylor County, Taylor County Forest, losing local law enforcement, fire department, and four burgers, who are walking, they're getting on a hill, and they're getting back to the wildfire for Taylor County. And we have a broke down by numbers, we had six blocking fires for thirty-four acres, and, 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 and one, with, uh, half acre, smoking on one fire with empty maker, three fires, seventeen fires, or nine, one sixty. Then there are, one, then six fires, five, one three. One fire, sorry, by yours, or, 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 three, eight, two, uh, three fires, three, oh, oh, first one, three acres. And it's the lengthy fire, we have nine, seven, four, five, twenty, fire, we have a fire in, in, uh, something that's, uh, uh.
Do you know, uh, probably how many, uh, uh, four, uh, uh, seven, five? Just, uh, uh, I know, I think. Well, that's, uh...
We do not feel that a plan to be lower deductible is going to be because we we are able to negotiate and pass as we still begin to come in. And we do that by offering top payments and we are quite insistent upon requesting discount from every single provider. And they have been quite thorough, I would say. And as long as we pay properly, it seems to be the phrase that helps us.
Yeah, see.
Yeah, so, I think I learned, I think you told me that a couple of years ago.
I was, yeah, that's true.
Yeah. So, and to add to the concern about these policies, even if we were to purchase a policy with a higher deductible, the inmate population has increased significantly. That alone is going to raise the cost of this existing policy almost seven thousand dollars. And, you know, about seven thousand, I believe. And that was going back to the area and asking them to please reduce the increase that they gave us. We were able to negotiate for about a five percent increase to a little over six percent. They would not offer that little bit of increase. And the reason for that is because our NA population has increased. Our average day population is to about one hundred and thirty. And just because it's increased that much. Now, we pay per inmate per day. It's how many pay on the policy. So, the fact that it's increased that much is going to increase your premium. Well, added to that is that's just thirty more inmates, which puts that at a higher rate. So, you're on, just having that many more inmates is going to increase the risk. So, when I reviewed our medical expenses, I will say that this is more of a problem because we have our inmates with your four. If that is going to increase your cost. We could probably not have to do this time to get using the budget zero, same. Because just going from a population of less than a hundred to a hundred and thirty is that many more people needing medical care and education. So, we're not looking at large catastrophic claims that we could say honey on by lowering the deductible. Even though this is always, I am the one who is in doubt, I will say that just having that many inmates with your four is going to increase your cost exponentially. And that's probably the nature of this. So, we did review other policies. Now, the one thing about this particular policy that is a part of it is that they aren't very high premium on this. The commission is seventy percent is quite high. But I believe we, as not, we're not willing to negotiate that down as a duty standard. So, I would say operations need to move forward with these policies to pay. There were catastrophic medical conditions that have been made on. And some of these inmates, now, they have to be held in custody. So, I don't, I don't think that we need to pay on that risk or anything. But what I would say is within the next year, I believe that needs to go into research for either another policy or some way that we can, that we can work a different way to see if it makes sense for companies to that.
Yeah, that's called enough here now, I won't take a risk. Well, I'm pretty sure we have talked about it. So, what's your recommendation?
Um, we would recommend that we move all our risks into option one. Actually, when we renegotiated this on the option payment, it's a forty thousand dollar deductible, two hundred and fifty thousand specific maximum. And it saves upon a hundred and thirty inmates. Now, the only way to maybe try to get that cost down time is if we go back to paying monthly. But I'm a little afraid to take that risk because if the population increases, then that's going to go up. And it's quite laborious to have to, you know, pay this every month and give the population. And it's going to be easier for us if we just pay on the four.
Yeah, um, in order, I'll move with that, but you say.
Yeah.
Yeah, most of my, we can take a second, we should give anybody a second. All, all at the same time.
Ah.
All at the same time. I wanted to, I like to charge staff with, like, if you, if you get the right time, if it's coming up and throw that in there. It's definitely far more important, I believe, um, for me, you know, I come to this myself, but, um, thanks for coming here. And we, you know, we'll charge them, I guess.
Yes, you can do that. Martin, I can work around that. And Nick's done a great job of the management. He calls, it's just having the increase in inmates is a solid difficult challenge. Thank you so much.
That's a good thing about it.
Yeah.
Sorry. You're pretty good, but soft, trying, within, oh, uh, perfect.
Yeah, twenty-two.
Twenty-two.
Um, Sharon, is included in your motion the ability to transfer funding and cover the remainder of the policy?
No, we're looking, yeah, uh-oh. I'll make that part of the move. I think so, I.
Okay.
Perfect.
Okay. I would like to consider a little of standard form of agreement with PTA, a medical contractor's fee for the tough ride airfield lobby project and Terry Foley Airborne, that's given on all the cost rate through it. Charlie.
All right, good. Bye.
We've got a bunch of that set on us now.
Bye. Standard full contract. Um, I would recommend that the company just, I'm actually terrified of all the, and that, that's how I would say. And I'll add, yeah, nothing. Uh, that is, okay.
Thank you. All at the same time.
Ah.
All at the same time. My just, Karen, thank you so much. Um, please, the more you consider that from a federal emergency management agency, staffing for access to farms and intermerging stocks, safer grants, and given that in federal markets.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Good morning. I am pleased to announce that if you remember months back, we had to apply for this grant. I said it was a very highly competitive grant and it was going to be hard to get. Of the thousands of our ones that applied, here were one of about three hundred that really showed that they get it. So, I'm very, very proud of what you've done to you. Um, so, move forward with that.
Thank you. Yeah, there is a match, there's a match, huh?
Yeah.
Seventy-nine thousand, seventy-nine twenty-six.
And if you remember what it is, in the first few years, the federal government, we put seventy-five percent call for salary back this. And in the year three, they'll put up thirty-five percent. So, and this upcoming, that's what you're reading this one by.
Yeah, well, okay.
Two and two. It was a good day when I got that email.
Yeah, I know, I did that all very soon.
So, um, I was just, well, I couldn't hear all, what's your plan on?
We put in, um, for the different, we put a Monday to Friday, our hiring, each hiring week. So, often the voluntary staff, that's where we don't really, one active person there to Monday to Friday, we don't have any. What's that, the goal is different.
So, the grant is two hundred and seventy-seven thousand, obviously, is spread out to three, or three?
Seventy thousand, thirty-two. And then they do thirty-five, thirty. And then the idea with the different is they try to build it so you can make smaller adjustments to your financial, you know, period there. Instead of doing year one, you have to come up with everything to make it more, because more man, you will get that more.
That's a, that's a thing, help me, thank you, help me.
Well, I ask you, someone said, um, in some recently, one of these meetings, a lot of the break, and, and she, and.
What's that?
She, she. What is the, she, is the T P that, that we were having to quit that, that was, was going or wasn't going? What is your take on that?
We are getting essence contracts right now, because it's been due certainly since we are part of the safer range. It basically is lobbying to set up, play the money spreading, and that's more of that.
But they have something.
We're other ways to do it right now.
Right.
We've got plenty already tied on, so our board is getting the, getting all the essence now to play this around. And that's the reason we're, we're, so. All right.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I believe so.
Your motion, like, can you present it, like, to me, here? Can you present it, Susan? It's not all that's going to say that.
Uh-huh.
All of those, right, Susan, what is Carrie, Carrie, okay. General business, there are, there's no, can we start all? And, um, the county minister, all, go to twenty-one, they sound a thirty hundred, is that a national hour?
You don't have to see here, not, I didn't anyway. Um, you love to say mercy, and we, we said we were, we're, I was probably, uh, we had a couple of seventy-nine equips. And as of today, they've all been back with, I wonder, uh, the name, he does a job, he was there. Out of the seventy-five, we've been evaluated, twenty-seven were not good, uh, thirty-one happened, uh, and eleven happened. Um, you talk about that? And I do want to say, thank you for the response we had there. But we, I keep up the score. Your, your response, you know, any, uh, over here.
Uh, all my notes is the roads, that note, roads, if you come in, property, so forth, and we're going to tell people that, that. But, um, I know I do, and I'm sure the other things, um, get these, so, if you, if you send any problems, um, to the law, and, and, you know, you do, um, specifically for public safety, I know that you said that the committee are duty, looking for all of this means, you know, in case of, of a call, and, uh, that's one of the notes, so, um, that's, that's the reason I was wanting to, to, that is not something for you to do immediately. Road repairs, but, uh, now, lucky, you know, there's, there are issues, I think, on that.
Here, out of my opinion, I think we should probably come up with, if big forms are going to be used for local state markets, we should have a process for that. And then if we have, after, you know, non-local state markets, we should have another process that, 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 that's a good thing. If we're setting the same forms, we may be giving the public the idea that, I mean, if we're going to, we're going to evaluate and give along the credit. I think there may be some other, another way of when, when these others come in, that is what we'll, we can evaluate them and then, and, you know, we can advise them, say, yes, we will have problems. So, they know, they can start, you know, to prepare, to look, we can provide, or.
How was the living house for?
Yeah, I think if you think, you know, how was the living? I, I don't know.
But if you think that would be, for, you know.
I think it would be beneficial if we could do something like that. I mean, between all the different market services and like the dispatch, if dispatch, this would be noted by that, even if it's not evaluation, that, that it's give the dispatch to say, if you dispatch out of distress, have a note in the C A system that there may be issues, you know? It might, it might not have happened in the full evaluation, just some sort of a note in the C A system. So, but that would go through your phone.
I want a couple of Fridays ago that we ended that kind of, that, that I was still turning around there, and I feel like that we needed. And the public, I know, if I have any calls, they're not coming in like I'm any regular call that I give, and then it's up to, it's coming, and then you write it to the side.
I would recommend, like, if, if we know that road repairs, that if roads are shut down, those are normally, and they are, I don't know if it's a, or a manager, just dispatch. I know dispatch gets, um, roads are going to be closed and shut down, so this is where they send out fire law enforcement, D M S, that they tell us, at times, you will not be able to chop down a road. I think something similar to that, which is what we should do, where if, if there is a problem of a private roadway, a private driveway, it needs to go to dispatch, to this way, if you need to take them all. That would be my recommendation.
So, they were not being, like, something you understand. So, those requests, I just have a straight to dispatch, or we need to make out for, and, and.
Like, it's, it's giving to them as an informational item, not so much as an evaluation, but to dispatch to give, you know, you're the owner. You know, had, had no, you may have issues with it. Um, that's how, that's how I operate.
For the state of emergency, that's why I, I didn't show it to the E B L, and this road is, and I want it, and, and, and it's notified nine one one. And they're going to get their cash. So, it, uh, we keep the team to do that, uh, you know, I don't know if it's deep in evaluating, but I, I would certainly want to see to you.
Yeah.
You would see, not, not a one, although, uh, on the roof, so, where you might.
Yeah, and like, that's, but, you know, if you think you have the system that will, that, you know, we can, we're, we're calling it off, you know, route. But I think giving it dispatch, not as an evaluation, but as an informational item. So, when they, I dispatch to you in a dress, it's, it's giving out my dispatch to all, or, or, I think that would be our, that would be our.
What they really need to know, if they need to send the road crews down there first, if you go through a bad road, sit a thing in the red car road down. Send a red car road down, just ten minutes to get down there, and then, and order a road crew to get in there, it's a house of money. But, that's the main thing.
Yeah, excuse me.
See, yeah, that's, that's whole drive, that's just whole drive.
That's exactly right. Then, then run around and park back routes to get the people out, so you could just go down, um, he puts flagging up on the street, uh, where Amos came there, or, 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 that's another route. Did it go into the mailbox address, and then try and go that way. But it, it's, it's still working that way, you know?
But I still have a lot of work to do, I think, so, it's, uh, it's just going to be, um, you know, related. Actually.
I, I would still like to, um, um, have you know, every board, the public, the roads that are land, I still, I would like to have, um, and, um, the data on, on what district it is, what road is, and how much we're spending, and.
Keep on reading, sorry.
Yeah.
One other, one other item, uh, there will be a meeting to go up to story next week. Uh, it's, it's, we can kick it back and forth if we go, if you're not seeing. So, I will be going, I mean, that's on the twenty seventh, that is part of a innovation policy conference, I'd like to take advantage of that conference. The conference is twenty-six, twenty-seven. So, I'll be on the conference, uh, next week.
We, we, we met.
Shark King.
Where?
Shark King. No, not, I mean, off the ground.
Yeah.
Other than.
Um, so, please comment and subscribe on the public forum, and then the title. If you're here and you wish to speak or talk to this forum, you should, you may come forward and say your name and address.
Thank you. I'm going to give, uh, two people off the ground, so I'm tired. Uh, back in January, I appeared with one of the workers, and I think, a lot of comments threatened should be funding program for the farm three bucks, for, for your, your. At that time, work, by the name, this is, we call that, agreed that the issue should be put on a workshop. I suggested at that time, that all the talking was involved, we noticed, participate, participate, set forth new parties, or negatives. Doesn't just end up, if not put on a workshop agenda, we have wasted nine months. And during that nine month period, the draft S E P, I provided copies to all the officials, set forth ten or eleven possible grant opportunities. Nine to ten months of advice. Granted, for, that, that, I had the opportunity to look into this, just, the board is just, we wasted opportunities. Wasted opportunities, opportunities. I would like right now, for the counter, for, mission of the, if the board is standing, your board, and if you put this happening with the offlane program, and what is safe, we have, you know, now, so, if I can answer that?
Yeah.
Can we get it? Either one of those. Be a little bit right now.
Yeah, very comfortable, I'm sure.
The Gulf and Torian have been in seven years, just recently allowed to be, they did find a lot of base picture, that's why we have to give our cautious to them, they. That is not, that is not a project, not seven, uh, we can have this, as we prove up safe, and as we move forward, we can change it. We don't have to permit grant applications. So, we just took one regular big grant application, we can envision a different application. So, there's nothing, one of you just said, it's not, we're not obligated to read property. Our concept is access to the company. Um, the boat round, the blue road, other things that can come up with, uh, go ahead. I feel like, we have to stay with the access to the coast, but there's a lot of we've done in that.
Do you see? Do they all make, we wait to not get, or always the, uh?
We are not, we are not. I think the whole process, the whole process, we've all spent up here, I mean, it's amazing, it's bureaucratic, animal, you know, we've been, we've been, went to meetings together, please, all you. If we're not, I, in the last two years, the meeting, in my opinion, has just, just, I don't know, it's complicated. It's fallen the same line, hurry up, wait, hurry up, wait. We have, we have new deadlines, we have not, in no way, just any things that can give to anybody. And we have not, it's, it's, it's.
Is, 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 uh, is it true that, um, that the other, other twenty-two counties on the Gulf Coast have submitted plans, and where the only county that doesn't?
No, that's not it. The other, other county has, all the counties are in the state, been here for a while. And I'm not counting, I'm sorry.
So, what do you think, Sam?
Our claim is improved access to the company. These are profit purposes, it's a boat round, uh, off the road, but as this money is, as this is more fully developed, we will have individual grants to make money. For example, we have eleven possible profit purposes, but somewhere in the future, we'll have to get a grant for maybe one profit purpose, which is a boat round, which is there, with access. So, we have not, we have, some counties have more fine problems. For example, include water sewer, actual hands-on engineering problems, but these ones, we can always, get the problem.
Well, now, I'm a little confused, these, this grant, private, uh, team, the, or you wait to the, 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 sense of this grant.
No, it is, why don't you, that's, one way to, why don't you stand there and approve this, uh, big state, and you're, and then working with Gulf and Torian through them, will be granted within this project.
How will that?
Give them up. Yeah, we'll have a pool of thirteen million dollars. And that's going to be spread out a number of years, I suppose, twenty years, I would look. So, fortunately, we were looking at getting above our money in the beginning, and then somehow, like, so, as this money goes in, we will have the opportunity to trade from, with the market trade, to get a grant on it. We are.
Now, we, one more time, we have a, a company that's going to split our grant by, do these grants, and then this, our middle has conflict, and has to withdraw. We have these guys, like, covering our grant, but our, our.
There's two parts. There is the part money, the part one money, which is our grant, so, again, four point one, we have a control board that's writing the grant for the general rate.
That's, that's.
That's five one.
That's, that's. Not land, first.
That's, that's four point one. Three months is controlled, we're going to the Gulf and Torian. They are going to write their grant for at some point.
Okay.
The Gulf and Torian is getting all this, getting all this, the golden funds to, to dispatch. So, they're, they're going to be controlled with that, and we'll be, we'll be working those guys, right?
Do we have allies?
No, we don't. We don't, they were so happy that they found out that they were, done this off. They may come down more, I think, because, because of that.
Oh, so. Oh, cool.
I, 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 I got in the chat. Bring the board to the table. Uh, everything, uh, in fact, in January, like I said, I provided the board with the documents. Uh, at that time, I gave the board a copy of what's called the draft, the draft S E P. I recommended schedule five, the Goff and Thorin at that time, was in two thousand eighteen. That the board should, uh, start to conduct their reasonability studies and get their break, just in the back of the life. I didn't send the draft there, I mean. I will provide you now, but finally, S E P. Says the same thing, two thousand eighteen, the bond agreement or speak this first in the year two thousand nineteen after some, newly undertaken by, you know, this patent, uh. Alright, so basically, there's a chance of them to get that. And they should put a grant here. That S E P, uh, does need to be done. I guess it already waiting nine months. I'm speaking for myself and other property owners involved, I still wish, they're concerned too. What's going on? So, what's going on? We asked for a workshop. Nine months, we're still waiting on the workshop. We need a workshop, we need to invite the property owners, get everybody together. It's not going to be a fifteen minute workshop. But you need to do something, doing something that's better than doing nothing. Those who stand in line first, with the voluntary money, every grand sum are going in, I'm the destroyer council, they're going to get their money first. Where's the other county going to be, the back of the line? There was something better than there. I, as a fact, there, not only am I disappointed, I'm embarrassed. But the fact that county commission is dead, nothing, nothing has been done. You're looking for something that's wrong in fact. The people that said the county for years, you know, I had the best identity. As do these other property owners, some of them I spoke with. We should do something that's better than doing nothing. I ask that the workshop is scheduled, the property owner is being invited, and let's get the job done. I'm too hard to see if the county can kick down a roof. Thank you.
I remember, you know, the question about workshop, and I remember that we agreed to have a workshop. And it does appear that we can't follow.
We have not followed.
What happened in terms of the workshop?
We have taken the workshop, we have not followed, we have not, basically, but we should stay at the workshop.
Okay, but he asked for it in January.
If you will just amend it to January sixteen.
I remember.
Alright, it was a agreement by the board to have a workshop. It was never put on, we can't enter the workshop, period. Like, like.
Do we have the, do we have the, um?
I don't know, the county could, if, when you take to a workshop, I don't know if it's, uh, per, basically.
I agree with the thought that we, we need to be proactive and we need to be getting ourselves in a way of twenty six counties have done that. I need to be the last one to, you know, to.
Uh, Chairman, we are not the last, we have a, uh, well. I may say some of these documents I've given to everybody, uh, includes email correspondence, I've had vertical control. It also includes some comments that, uh, the F D E P made in part reference to the county. If you'll check emails, I will send you this afternoon, or today, every morning, a copy of the comments from F W and C. And reference to Dallas Street and Higgins Cove. Take those, print them all, put it with the package, read over, and this is where you'll be ready for workshops. And if you excuse my voice, I got stretched out, and I have to call my people. Well, I'm going to talk, it's a official workshop. We're already enough today, we're doing everything we want to do. What, what, what's the outcome of the work? Would you have further discussed, uh?
Discussing.
Would you have further discussed, how you want to go with your concept for food access?
Uh, that one?
This is a state's winter plan, we'll be back to that one. Uh, you voted to submit those properties moving forward. Your concept was to improve access, public access to the company. Either purchasing, we're purchasing properties, to improve boat grounds, our cars, kayak launches, uh, we need to talk about, it could be roads to the coast, uh, whatever. It has been, it went out so much. Whatever we can do to improve our access, makes better for the public, to the coast. That's what the county concept is, you know. Within any, I think it's room, we'll be submitting individual grants to go after this. Alright, so I don't know anything, we want to go after, bit of individual grants to improve the boat grounds, that areas, whatever, that's how we do, in this one. It will be finished in two years. And we, the last spreadsheet I saw, at the time, were some lines of five weeks' length, first three or four years. So, I don't feel like we're behind that long, at all, I'm really sorry.
Okay, um, Dr. Laurie, uh, I'm seeing a C O T that looks here and, uh, we discussed, uh, that that curve. And perhaps, you know, being able to, uh, straighten that curve, uh, from our, to not be so bad for the, um, there. And they recommend that we, um, start looking at properties that, um, that we started that month.
I regret to say, you know, I regret to say that we had first.
Which, which direction at that time? And can you tell me?
I'm trying to follow. Uh, we would be able to accomplish that, right, right? The work.
Yes.
That's true.
Yeah.
It had been curved. Maybe you're heading west, alright, you're looking more anxious, more scared to slow down. Uh, if you miss the curve, you go straight down to the death, the chances are you're not going to ever go. But if you cut the other way, alright, there's two bumper strips that are actually raised, the other two are more or less flat. I think they had that in reverse, because if you come, if you head any north, you're going to run into the trees, you're going to do. You're either way going west, you're going to go down to the Dallas Street, there's a chance you won't have it, but don't want to put that, there's to be a deal for somebody, and you're going to.
Well, I had that for, uh, two thousand one, so my mother and I, we all turned off on that curve. And they, uh, they did not go straight. They, they tried to go around the curve, because when it, when you realize, whatever reason you're there sometimes, ultimately, it's all, it's taking, it goes straight.
Okay, you want to make that turn.
But, yeah, you try to make that, that turn, it's not happening when there's this, um.
The thing is, for, I don't think there are any more, there's a lot of people who, when they hire, they're, are unprepared, uh, to that, to that curve, they couldn't learn a lot.
Yeah, and we, and that's my, um, my claim back then, the, you know, trip was coming out. And the county replaced us sometime after that, and now they're getting far again.
The strip's going towards, two hundred, two hundred and, uh, so, that needs to be looked at, you know, this one.
I was about to add, add, car two, just, just, it takes, that's the, they're, going out, maybe do.
Do you have anything else on the property, while we?
Every time you knew the property, we needed a workshop. We needed to find the property, and start to, uh, and then we learned the workshop. But, but all of this is advanced, it's shaped up to the workshop. It's not, we've done it fifteen minutes, alright, everybody can bring their policies or negatives, and cameras, whatever. But it needs to be, it's the first time. And documents, yes, we have, from the Goff and Thorin, the media, alright, I'll send you some more documents, and that's where, uh, S E P. Let's put it together and let's get the job done once and for all. Two thousand eighteen, in the great Atlantic reasonability study, five and a break. Alright, after some administrative business by the Goff and Thorin, to be known, Christine, and grants, we're all over, we submitted to the destroyer council. Ladies and gentlemen, that's in black and white. I take my report, appreciate it.
I would say, we sit down on the next workshop, then we first follow the workshop, so we have enough time to address it. Make sure we know about these property owners that have, um, indicated that they, that their properties are available, and, uh, plan to, to just, to talk this through.
No, I will say, I have to, to, to show them, but I'm speaking on behalf of the property, so we have a talk here. In your, in your, all your studies, um, to have, what? I haven't spoken with them. But what, did, who, did they tell you who was going to play to your front? Who's going to, like, play with the appraisal? The appraisal? Yeah, uh, if you look at the documents I gave you, uh, they, they, they put forward the cost of the reasonability study, and three hundred thousand, uh, tuitioned issues. Alright, they put, because they threw a cost of one thousand dollars for appraisal. Now, if you, if you check your prior, that you did form two and three, you got maximum of three appraisals. Alright, it's not going to be a hundred thousand dollars, trust me, alright, but if you put your payments together, put your grants together, alright, you can be reimbursed. Alright, if it meets the guideline, you can be reimbursed for the appraisal, for any reasonability study. I don't think you need to go and hire some consultant to do a reasonability study. Uh, that's a major study, because all we have to do, look at this office, along the coast, and apply what's usually referred to as common sense, and we can eliminate some of it.
I understand that, but there's no money being put out until they do, say, yes, so we should then go hire people to do that research and do the appraisal and, you know, without some money for, of what, this lady's trying to say, it hasn't been appropriated yet to do anything.
Well, I understand, this would have been one of the problems. Alright, some are along the road that was driven on the eight, the eight now being put forward, alright, in that, I don't know if they. Somebody decided to river downstate, I can't find a record of it being reduced to one eight. Alright, and until we use, if we use our own studies, we can reset the statistics. We don't have to worry about opinion, or, or service costs. We've had to come up with number one, and we're doing this for number four first, that's the first step. Money comes with, it's a signature, it's kind of like. Just this common sense, that's all, you know, that's all, that's all, that's all.
Want to comment? Thank you. Uh, anybody else, uh, so, so, what, uh, if he's about anything that was not renewed? This way, you don't have anything to say?
Uh, not that you want to hear the term of saying on Steven's brain.
Bring it up.
Uh-huh. Okay, everything is good.
I bet you.
And you remember Steven's where he had a natural occurrence about two months ago, six, four months ago? Uh, in what is, when he was here and when the monitor district, he started an inspection program on a daily basis, for, for, uh, we recorded it. And when the natural current happens, the level in the spring pool rose about forty, forty four inch. And that effectively, extra pressure, forced the spring flow to go underneath their wall. The wall is still solid enough to where it was going under, it's not an issue. In initial time, it put up five or six small spring heads in the spring run. Over that time, uh, and now, they've all consolidated into one, all the spring heads, about thirty, thirty six inches, which is twenty one inch. And it's flowing really good, it's clear water. And the testing process, we checked, the spring pool, that top wall, at low tide and at high tide. At low tide, the water is lower in the spring pool. It rains from about thirty three, thirty four, thirty eight. At high tide, because the water in the spring run was higher, you know, putting that crater on the flow of the two spring heads and then on the wall. The crater, the wall, level in the spring pool is higher than at low tide. Uh, part of the water, when the tide is high in the run, is causing the flow of the spring, the flow into the pool, helps keep it clean. At low tide, it's running out, which is flushing the pool. The, uh, take is, that there's no algae still in the pool. It's still there, it wasn't before, using the pool, the water, maybe, now it's slowed down because of the, like, the years were going into. Uh, I've been told by the monitor district, by the state, how she built up the pool to, it's a turn, it's a, the, the check block. If we do not see that, and a lot of heat is pouring clear under the wall, it's better to keep it low down. Yeah, because if the way the wall was deconking, and you rebar, the weight of the concrete, it's vibrating, that's a easy no problem there. So, basically, we got natural cycles, rain interferes, it's, it's just, it's still raining, all of it. It makes it worse than that, or better. Uh, it's something that, I have to give, give, see through, something that you should give, see through, because you can't control nature. The people that use the park, don't want to get used to it, um, they want the high water in the pool. Uh, in talking to some of the longtime residents that used that spring forty, fifty years ago, sixty years ago, at times, it was a major cycle. The spring flow went down to where it was normally, uh, ankle high, other than the time they had three or four of the water. Before any real wall was built. Uh, we've got this frame, we've got this block, uh, we have to get used to it, like with nature, it's been locked, if anything, looks like it'll be a health problem, it will be for sure. On the shore side, or the part of the wall, those that do have been down there recently, you've seen, uh, two more panels put up. One on the weather, which was a, hit those for shark, shark boats, or fishing, and fishing. I mean, a lot of information is going on. In the last month, we had two more families come forward and they started on their research, but they're just beyond the wall. Uh, if you have questions, I'll try to answer, I'll, I'll get your, your, uh. Uh, how is the depth, from you, like, so far? Uh, it's putting home itself, okay? It probably goes, because I haven't been in water lately, because it's cold spring water, uh, from four to five feet, I'm just thinking. Alright, if you go over what the spring heads are, at the spring head is now, so they're still over ten feet deep. The majority of the rest of the box is just straightforward.
Can I just tell you, I don't remember, do you have any, uh, some, like, scouting, like, scouting, about there, or something?
We have arms to take, he falls the block, we have arms to take, he falls the wall, oh God, if he falls the wall, period. If they're on the wall, they're violating the rules. Uh, if they go on top, they're violating the rules, there's a lot of ability out there.
Or if we have, like, all, like, that, that, uh?
Uh, that's a security.
Yes. It's a big problem.
It's a, it's a, yeah.
Yeah. Uh, that would be, uh, uh, that, yeah.
Okay. Um, yeah, they should, yeah, I have to.
Well, thank you. We want to, uh, like, we're, we're doing that project.
That's true, that's true.
Yeah.
That is, you, you, by, by Goff and Thorin's approval, I mean, the governor, state review, state approval, by now, sitting in the square council. Next, it's to be approved on the floor, twenty seven, this month. Alright, but it may be approved now, but that is the final, S E P. It's my call.
Okay.
To the exception of former race, alright.
Anybody else? Thank you, um, I'm twenty three, four, anybody on, this is Brad?
I don't have, uh, yeah, put more, leave, there, future, like, full shot, maybe you don't, full shot. Um, not that, uh, uh, maybe, uh, you, yeah, that's all.
Mr. Dan, uh, is your name?
I got a call from the Lady on Property District, attempting to decide, if I identify, if I, I'm burning, this is, what, uh, this is. Very much so. She's just, plus, they're, they're proper. And she's asking, well, I have no determination, very specific. So the long I've often given the phone, uh, don't move on, we get a call from Rosemary, that's, again, uh, somebody needs to get me up to that. First, there was under five, right, it's a front significant, and, uh, we told you to be advertised. If you can't even advertise on social media, then we are property to advertise. See, we advertise, it's an application, we can handle this, uh, Rosemary, yeah.
It's not, it's not, because he did not pay.
Good, you're on, yes, good. Yes, you got, uh, that's all, uh, thank you a lot.
I should.
Alright, very good.
Okay, um, yeah, that's it, Tom. Um, I just want to let the world know how this just began, that's rings on this complex. Um, they found a special property for that, became dead to the police, some yard, and for he to be his first copy of the party from out, that is, that's all. There is a lot of people with him, that's affected by that. I've written a letter, I've done everything that I know to do, that is, but it doesn't know, and let, they seem concerned that I was called to the head office. It caused a disaster, and I did all my best, that long time. I have all the documents in there, and some are gathered in this party, in here, that's it. Those are, plus, you'll bring us at each time, will be intended to come back to this, what we get, is a statewide, statewide data, that we could all burn off. And, and we stand in that statewide, this company, that's right. And you know, what concerns me is that he finally agreed, and they were contacting me anyway. They have an ad, they have seen all these, it's called, what it's called. And a lot of people with the papers, I got some, but I got a few that they, and they did. So, my concern here is that he, he has paid, got spoken to the roof, he's got people that are walking to love to be, and steal ten dollars worth of things, and they get fucked, you know, that's my concern. It's not fair, so I have to indicate, but it's been done, and on the court side, I have some latest audits, we'll be cut. Your hobby is involved, it's going to get it, it will be due today, and please, leave that off. All right, if you will test, there's a special, we got information in it, it's been, so I would say, leave it, and when y'all get ready to, let me know, and I'll ask the chairman to call back to me. I have tried to deal with the person long last. I've seen letters, you got a copy in the last letter, reporting about, I have not heard one word from him. And this, this audit report, or table, you know, um, that sort of, I return receipts, because county district, and they signed for it on August third. And the letters that were sent to the audit before, I gave to you on twenty days, to contact me, to let's look over the audit, keep concerned about what's going on. I have not heard one word from him. The board, this is your comment, y'all need to be good in that, and come at, he knows what's going on. Y'all just need to be good at that, and read what's in there, and you'll be shocked if I tell you. So I ask you to there, when you're ready, and you're, you're ready to discuss, I'll tell you, and let me know, I'll get, get, we'll get, we'll get, we'll get. That's, that's my report, and another time, yes, I don't think, and I can't hear the chairman, so I, well, when you, when you, that'll be held, we'll be here. Every year, I'm sure there'll be people that come to that meeting, you know, called, we're not going to get it. That is a valuable process, it's combined with, that's the main topic, so, so, look at that email, and see, you're supposed to hear, we figure on that. So, you know, we got full report, we got attorney, and companies doing something off the case, so, uh, and I will have manuals, because everybody has not, we need to, we need to, I mean, you know, I mean, you know, I mean, they are, we get these, we have a copy of that, it's about a copy, we're all working with campus. So, I can't put it too easy for time, but we have got to sort of our last time, I think, so, we can, so, I have needed to give that email, so it's very cool. Okay, so.
I gotta go, how about it, I got more.
If I know, okay, um, something that I've done, I got called.
Can I go?
Yes.
Alright.
I got called, um, I think it was last week, by, uh, the shop, who said that she had gone to me, calling on the floor office. And that they went twice, in one day, and that they will never ask for any kind of compensation.
I don't know, you got it, bro.
We got the same call, and she said that, um, in addition to that, that the role officer didn't come out and, uh, speak or offer a thought or anything. And, uh, she was truly complaining about that situation, that was behind the door. Did anybody else do it, Tom?
I, I got a call, on my, I listened to it, but I didn't get involved, and I called her back, and calling is not a bother. Oh, bye. And I personally, I looked at, I didn't get out of the chair, I'm, yeah, a little pin, I think.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I would be, I get, since we get out there, a little check, a little pin, because they all, first, because all the cell, it's, you know, I thought, I thought it was him, because I called him, he was telling that.
Uh, he did call.
And the list is, she said she lived on Beachwood, I think that's where she is. So, she's a little bit odd, and, and.
What, what, she got the, cough, coughing?
Yeah, and a gentleman there, he came back in town, he did nothing, he, little irate, especially her back, like, somebody did, scared her to nothing.
You can find out what that, any time, I'll find out, that's what. She got a, what did he say, she got a little, she?
I believe there's a message, you have a lot of corners, that she had a little key.
And she said, they went twice, I believe she said, and, uh, they've never asked for an ID, or, or anything, um, but, and then, uh, uh, I had a complaint from the citizen about the burnt Johnson's, that one attended there, will not get up, at, at all. And, uh, it's not safe, uh, that whoever else is there, uh, that they will not, will not get up.
I had a little, a box, I come from, I drive up, I only have the address.
Well, that's how my chair was taken, our shit.
They, they, they drive that, they have to be careful of that. You from ninety nine, then, from, I tell you, I'm, I'm, I grew up a long time, very young, we, they have, I, I get critical, and I'm pretty good, and I settle with them.
Well, I'm sure the report will come back if it happens.
I got a call, so I didn't talk, and they say, anybody called, it's there, it's there, it's, yeah.
Okay, I don't have anything else to do, so, most of the, sure.
Most of the, sure.
On this day and say, ah.
Ah.